Welcome, everyone. I'm now calling this meeting to order. Please stand with us. We'll be led in prayer by Alderman Gallagher. After that, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance that will be led by Alderman-at-Large George Payne.
Heavenly Father, we're so blessed to live in a country where we can freely worship you, Lord. Lord, we just want to thank you for that opportunity. Lord, I thank you for all the people that are here today, for our public servants who take care of our people each and every day. Lord, I pray that you'd be with us during this meeting, Lord, and that you would give us wisdom in everything that we do. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First on the agenda this evening is the approval of minutes for the June 6, 2023 meeting.
Can I make the motion we approve the minutes?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, a second by Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution to amend city ordinance Title VII, Sections 7 through 10 and 7 through 15. City Attorney Nick Manley.
This ordinance was discussed at the last meeting, and the mayor's report is tonight presenting it for approval. It amends the ordinance to allow for the, or noting that the city will not collect those trees or removal of trees that have been done by the third party or contractor. They were having some issues with that throughout the city. So the ordinance has revised, reflect that, and to take that out of the public work discretion and to make it where the city does not collect those. And if they must be removed within seven days, so that that way it'll be, I think we're having some issues in certain parts with the property or the trees being there for extended period of time. So this ordinance will clarify that along with remove the discretion to provide clarity what the city requires for those trees that are being removed on property by third parties and other contractors. So tonight, authorization from mayor to sign the resolution for the ordinance, and it'll go into effect one month from passage.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Flores, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion?
I've got a question. So who's going to make, will the rubbish company make the designation, the distinction that it's, this was obviously done by a third-party company, this is too much? How's that going to work?
Well, the language in the ordinance indicates that if it's something that's routine, you know, so if there's a doubt, then you should, you should haul it off or pace it to make it haul it off. So like, it talks about, is it something that would generally require a third-party contractor? But the key language that is in there is if it's not routine, like you're, you know, obviously people, you know, cut branches, you know, when you have wind, like we had this weekend, it's going to break limbs off, that kind of thing. That's all your standard stuff. But, but you know, if you're going in and having, you know, three huge trees removed from your property, you know that that's a, a commercial-style job. So, but roundabout way to answer your question is, I mean, that's our determination, correct, City Attorney?
So what it does, it says nonroutine, routine maintenance or upkeep. So it tracks the same language of Mississippi Code 3171. And it talks about construction. So if you have nonroutine construction, that's defined in the code that don't require bids. So we use that same concept, the same language from 3171 to say nonroutine maintenance. And so if you had nonroutine maintenance or upkeep, that would be the third, that would be the distinction. Now, is there a perfect clear line? You can say this, but it's, it's more, it's, to the mayor's point, if it's not nonroutine, a couple of branches, that's fine. But I think the issue is going to be three or four trees that are being cut down. Now, there may be some, like any ordinance, there may be some gray area. But for the most part, the nonroutine should cover any, any questions and take away the discretion associated with prior ordinance, which gave discretion to the city on what they wanted to do and what they didn't want to do.
Most of the situations that we're trying to address are flagrant in nature, like?
I, I agree. I definitely understand. I know what it's taken advantage of. I think my concern is someone who's not taking advantage of the, of the, of the system. But, you know, has did a lot of work on the weekend and, you know, cleared out a lot of stuff in their backyard, and it made a lot of stuff.
It's, it's kind of, I mean, to your point, I see what you're saying. I think it's a distinction without a difference because our, our contract with our race, our rubbish company anyway, doesn't allow for anything that's nonroutine as well. So this is just involving the city coming to clean up. There's still, the contract with Waste Connections excludes that type of pickup as well for the most part. Now, they've been doing some of it. They pick up one load, but for the most part, that is excluded in that contract as well. So this is just in keeping consistency with the contract along with the goal of the city not having to do that because of the amount, manpower that requires.
So both, both our contractor and our public works team are giving the benefit of the doubt to the citizens. So a good way to know is if it's not routine, if they don't pick it all up, you know that you had a, you have a load that's not routine.
So would it before that, if they hired somebody, if they hired somebody?
No, I'm saying if they picked part of it up, not if they miss you.
I mean, so wasn't it before that if they hired somebody to cut the tree, they were supposed to have it hauled off by them?
Yeah, but it was, it was different. There were a few different pieces of language in there that were outdated.
It was, that was the concept, but it wasn't clearly stated. And so this clearly states it along with taking this. The other one had discretion language in it, you know, the public works and look at and have user discretion. This just takes in, you know, like, like the point though, there is no perfect science to say what was done, what wasn't done, but it does, it does try to give some clarity and direction by saying nonroutine. But if a third party does it, and it's a big, if you're using a third party, chances are that's not going to be nonroutine because the third party is doing it. So that would fall within the scope of, or would fall outside the scope of what the city and the contractor Waste Connections would pick up on our ordinances now.
So what does somebody do if they cut their own tree down?
Well, that's why we took, it's not, that's why, what he's just telling you, we didn't have it in there if you hired somebody. Because someone could, I mean, if you have a citizen that has skills on their own, they, they may have a forty-foot-long pile of rubbish and say, well, I didn't hire anybody. I did that. Well, still, you gotta, there has to be some, you know, a little bit of common sense there, you know? If it's a load that's, that's not a, a routine trimming, whether you cut it or you hired somebody, the same thing would apply. That's what we're trying to get away from is, and there's, it's just a handful of ones, but, you know, our contractor can't make the city hit all the stops in the city if they're having to stop and do an unusual large load. I mean, they're having a, you know, there's eighteen thousand homes in the city. I mean, they're, you know, they can't stop and spend an undue amount of time on one pickup, you know? So that's why they're, you know, in their contract, they're, it's like a volume requirement, so they're picking that up and then leaving the rest. Well, as you know, I know every one of us have had calls about that. What problem does that solve? If you pick, pick a piece of it up and leave the other, it still gives you the, all the negative effects of having rubbish on the street for an unlimited amount of time. So, so that was the driving purpose behind, you know, this ordinance revision. So I think, again, it has to be a, you know, a little bit of common sense approach, but, you know, if it's not routine, you know, if you go do a massive project and you got, you know, twenty, thirty feet of rubbish pile, that's, you know, look around you. I mean, look at your neighbors. I mean, it's pretty clear. I can show you a few right now that are out there. It's unbelievable, the size of these rubbish piles, you know? I think it's as clear as it can be. It's, it's like everything else we do. It's not a perfect science. It's hard to, you know, put the words to, you know, address every possible situation, but bottom line is if it doesn't get picked up, that's a pretty good indication that you got, it's not a normal routine load.
Certain things you, you can't define, but you know when you see it. Paraphrase of famous Supreme Court.
I, again, I'll say this, though, the ones that have been brought to my attention that I've seen, it, it's not a gray area. I mean, it's, it's, it's flagrant. It's, it's crazy how huge the work there is that they're asking, you know, our contractor to pick up.
Yeah, yeah, I've seen a lot of contractors, so to speak, come in and in charge of people to cut the stuff down. They just don't want to haul it off.
Yeah.
And I, I think that that should be part of the requirement, basically, they do that, so.
And that's the goal. That's what this ordinance, we believe, will, we believe that will resolve that. And if not, we'll tweak it again. We'll come back, bring it back. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for conveyance of property pursuant to Mississippi Code Section 5771.
Yeah, this was also discussed at last meeting in the mayor's report. This is the authorization for the city to convey property in accordance with 5771 as opposed to 21171 for exchange of property in the silo development, which will then encompass a police department. So the city has basically at this point subdivided the property at May Boulevard between the police department and fire department. There will then be a future conveyance of the silo parcel in the silo development to the city, which will include a police station that will then be, or an office, a building that will then be transferred to the city in exchange for the city property along with one million five hundred thousand dollars for that property at Silo. And so that will then allow us to do under Mississippi Code 5771 for economic development purposes because the silo portion will be used for city purposes. The portion from the city will be used for economic development purposes. And so this, that contract will reflect. The hope is to close on this by the end of next year, so the December of 2024, due to the construction that's required. So tonight, this resolution will authorize the mayor to do that, I mean, sign the contract, authorize the transaction along with the contract being executed by the mayor. So happy to answer any questions, but it's, as stated in the resolution and contract. So we, it basically doesn't make us go through the proxy. We've done this as well with other properties in the past, but it, 5771 does not, excludes us from having an operator in 21171 as far as conveying to property.
I will make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Flores, second Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion?
And this, this is going to take the place of our East Precinct. Let's go have the headquarters here.
Correct. The, the location of the East Precinct is the property that's in, in this agreement. So we would be trading that property for this new one. The building, we've already gone through that. The specs of the building, police have looked at that. They're, they're good with it. They've thumbed up it. So we believe it's a facility that, you know, will meet police needs on the eastern part of our city for many years in the future.
Nick, the one million five hundred thousand payment is coming from Silo?
Those coming from the city, based on their appraisal of the property. So, and then to the mayor's point, the specs and the specifications for the building are included in the contract. That must be met as well.
That includes the finished constructed building.
Gotcha. Okay. The city is getting, it's a.
It's a deal.
It is important to note, among many other things, the, the facility will have a, a booking station. So as of right now, when there's an arrest made, our police are bringing everyone back to this one headquarters. So you can imagine, as big as our city is now, how inefficient that is. If we have another booking location like that, it makes us so much more efficient. Our police can get back on the streets. So it's going to be, it's going to be great for our police operation. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
No.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for South Haven Police Department Lieutenant Keith Goss retirement. We're going to allow, is the hand, allow a handgun, is that correct?
Yes, the surplus of Mr. Goss's handgun, I mean, recognition as a retirement, which would be June 30th of this year. And so tonight, just the authorization to approve in that resolution in honor of Mr. Goss's retirement.
So we?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Jerome. First, I would just like to thank Lieutenant Goff for his many years of service to the city. Best wishes on your retirement. We appreciate your service. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for unmarked vehicle.
These vehicles will be, or this vehicle will be unmarked in accordance with the Mississippi Code. So authorize the, unmark the SPD vehicle as we're doing tonight.
So move?
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Gallagher, second Alderman Payne. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for sanitation assessment.
These resolutions just be authorizing sanitation assessments for those who have not paid the sanitation monthly charge in accordance with 21191. I think there's only three or four.
Make that motion. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is a resolution for a sole-source purchase in our South Haven Police Department.
Like I said, there's actually two of these tonight. The first one is, you can approve it of both at the same time if you want to. The first is a purchase of three drones, an amount of forty-five thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars from Axon, which is the entity that does our body camera and is compatible with evidence.com. Since that is the only, only drone that will work with our Axon, current Axon program and our evidence.com. That's the only, only company that provided is Axon, so that's the reason for the sole source for the drones. And also, Axon is going to also do the sole source for the, what was it, the drones. And then the other one is that signal unit. This will be the purchase from Axon as well that allows for the body camera to automatically turn on when the doors open or light bars activated. So those are both purchases from Axon as sole source, simply because we use Axon for our body cameras. Our, our, both are compatible with evidence.com and required for our current needs along with our current hardware and software.
I'll make that motion. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion?
These drones are going to be a huge tool for our police department going forward.
Yeah, this, this is just another example, South Haven Police Department, you know, maximizing the use of modern technology. I mean, every technology we can use, you know, obviously, you know, we need as many staff as we can have on the ground. But the other thing is we've done, our team has done an incredible job of maximizing modern technology in so many ways. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Thank you, Nick. Next on our agenda, we have, like to introduce Dr. Projolyn Walker to come forward and speak to us tonight. Thank you for joining us, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate you so very much. Good evening, everyone. I am Dr. Projolyn Walker, and I appreciate the opportunity that you all have given me to be on the agenda tonight or this evening. Wanted to introduce myself again, Dr. Projolyn Walker, Republican candidate for State Representative District Seven and a Reagan conservative. When elected, I look forward to working closely with you and your staff and other city officials to ensure a glorious future for generations to come. I will do this by listening to your concerns and working hard in Jackson, Mississippi, to get our fair share and bigger piece of the pie. I commit to you all today in prayer over each and every vote that comes across my desk and every bill that is passed, and to provide not only proven leadership, but effective leadership. As a business owner here in DeSoto County, Mississippi, I live, work, and shop here in DeSoto County, Mississippi, to ensure that our community and our state remains thriving and prosperous. I am for smaller government, transparency, and lower taxes. I stand with our first responders, our veterans and educators of this county for their hard work, dedication, and sacrifices for our well-being, and to ensure that they have the necessary resources to end support, to do their jobs, and remain effective in this community. I am Dr. Projolyn Walker. I approve this message. I will see you at the polls on August the 8th, 2023. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much for coming forward and for that message, and best wishes to you in the election. Okay, next on our agenda is a resolution to claim private property.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt a resolution granting authority to claim private property as presented on the state. Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Kelly. Is there any discussion among the board? Hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that has a financial interest in any of the properties that would like to speak? Hearing or seeing none. Roll call, please.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman Hoots?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
Okay, and that motion carries. Next on our agenda, we do not have anything for the planning agenda, so I'll move on to mayor's report. One of the biggest pieces of information to share with all of you tonight, our police department has been working for many years to, to get an accreditation qualification through the state of Mississippi. And been working on that a long time, and the good news is this week, we are receiving that. So Chief Moore tomorrow will be receiving that reward. A lot of work has gone into that for many of our police teams, so it's a big deal. Basically, I, I will tell you, I'm not going to read all this to you, but basically we'll tell you that what it's about is it's an organization. Mississippi has a, an accreditation commission, just like many other states in our country. They all use similar standards for a later, to get another accreditation through the commission for law enforcement agencies in general in our country. So South Haven has now received the state accreditation, which will, you know, allow us to, to move forward and, and advance that to a national accreditation. But the standards are the same. Basically, it's just, it's making your operation more efficient, improving accountability with your police department, having better engagement, you know, with your citizens, and just improving the integrity and the efficiency of the operation and professional standards. So it's just, it's a big deal for us to, to receive that. So the report tonight, and we'll, you'll see more data coming out about that. But, but we've been trying to get this for a long, long time, and so our, our police leadership that's in the room, we appreciate you guys. It's a big deal. Next thing, just a couple minor things. The meeting, the next meeting, because of the July 4th holiday, will be on July the 5th. So please, you know, make adjustments in your schedule for that. July 4th, we will have our annual fireworks celebration as we've had for many years. This year, since the Bank Plus Amphitheater renovations are complete, we'll bring people back into the amphitheater. So it's always been a grand event, and it, and people tell me every year, it's better than the last. So we expect another fantastic event there on July 4th. The other, last thing I want to share with you is, is another monumental accomplishment for our city. Many of the, or most of the board members were on the board back in 2015 when we were recruiting and trying to hammer down the details to bring the Tanger Outlet development to South Haven. There was an enormous amount of work on that project. It was a dead project in 2013. We couldn't get agreement on the public incentive. In those discussions, we realized that the, that the Mississippi Development Authority's tourism rebate program, that this development would qualify for that. So when we, when we realized that and started pursuing that, that's when the wheel started to turn, and it made this, made this development happen. Many of y'all remember those discussions. And when, basically, what we had to commit to is the sales tax revenue that was developed by the development that we've never had before, we had to agree that those new sales tax dollars, that thirty percent of that would go to the developer. That's where the, the incentive came from. When you look at that, you know, and the projections there that it was going to be, I forget, five to seven years, you know, down the road before the city got any sales tax revenue, and it seemed like a, a very long time. And it was a long time. But the good news to report to you is that we reached out to the Department of Revenue this week, and we made our last payment on that. So, so what that, what that, that's a huge thing for the city. So what that means, and just to be technically correct, the developer in 2015, the mall opened in November of 15, and they at that time had considered doing a phase two with the rebate program. But MDA told them that you either have to wait to collect the rebate if you're going to do phase two. You can't, you know, start collecting one without the other. So eventually what happened is they decided not to do phase two, but in, but for twelve months, they were waiting to decide. So we didn't actually start paying the rebate back until January of 17, and so we actually finished it. We get our numbers two months, a few months behind, but the actual payment. but the actual payment was in February of twenty-three, the last payment. So it was right at six years that it took us to do that. So the sales tax projections that we had in two thousand fourteen and fifteen were very accurate. And that number, the last payment that we made was two-point-one million dollars. So what that means is that effective immediately, there will be two-point-one million dollars that's gonna be put into our budget. And so it's a, it's a huge thing for us. It was a good decision. And so we're gonna pay, we're gonna receive the dividends from this point forward. So anyway, that's great news, and that will help us tremendously as we get near, you know, budget talks for our next budget year. And that's basically all I have this evening, so we'll move on. Next on the agenda is our personnel docket.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the personnel docket as presented on the state.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Gallagher. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is our city attorney's legal update. Mr. Nick Manley again.
Just two quick items. The first item is authorization to approve a, a contract. This came up yesterday. It's a professional service agreement with a company called Back on Track Forensic P L L C. They'll assist the city fire department in getting the drug test along with the physicals that are needed for, for pre-hire, pre-employment screening. We run into some issues with our current provider as far as backup times and wait time. So this entity will also help. We need them to provide that to get firefighters and if police are required and service quicker when they're new hires. So tonight, need authorization for human resources, Manley, to sign this as presented.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Jerome. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I have it, motion carries.
And then next thing, just entering in, amphitheater contracts that have been previously approved by the board for the mayor to sign into the minutes, no action required, just authorization for those being entered in the minutes.
Thank you. And next on the agenda is our utilities billing leak adjustment docket.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve utility bill leak adjustment docket as presented on the state.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Hoots. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on our agenda is one claims docket.
Mr. Mayor, move we approve the claims docket in the amount of three million four hundred and eighty-four thousand six hundred and eighty-one dollars and forty-nine cents, including demand checks.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Payne, second Alderman Flores. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Alderman Payne?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
Alderman who?
Yes.
Alderman Jerome?
Yes.
Alderman Gallagher?
Yes.
Alderman Wheeler?
Yes.
Alderman Flores?
Yes.
That motion carries. Next on the agenda is the purpose of determining the need for executive session.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Wheeler, second Alderman Payne. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I have it, motion carries. The need this evening is potential and ongoing litigation in, in accordance with Mississippi law, economic development within the city and interdepartmental personnel with no action. Is there a motion to declare executive session?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion of Alderman Hoots, second Alderman Gallagher. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. I have it, motion carries. The mayor and board have announced our executive session.